Good evening. Welcome to Lewiston City Council meeting of Monday, April 25, 2016. This time we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please, Counselor Johnson, reciting the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the city manager. And in consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Do we have any citizen comments? Do we want? Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and move on to public hearings and presentations. Our first item up is a proclamation. It is a proclamation for Arbor Day, which is April 29, 2016. And the proclamation states, "Whereas, in 1872 Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees, and the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, the Lewiston City Council does hereby proclaim April 29, 2016 as Arbor Day, and urges all citizens to plant and care for trees, to gladden the heart, and promote the well-being of this and future generations." And we have our urban forester, Mr. Riley Stark here.
Riley? Thank you. Give that. All right. Good evening, esteemed members of Lewiston City Council. It is with great pleasure that I announce the 28th observation of Arbor Day in Lewiston as a Tree City USA. 2016 is a landmark year for the Tree City USA, as it is the 40th year of the program with the Arbor Day Foundation. It is with the help of city council that our urban forestry program was able to achieve its 18th growth award after our update of city code. I cordially invite Lewiston City employees and members of the council to attend our annual observance this Friday at 11:00 a.m. in Division 1 of Norma Hill Cemetery, where we will plant an oak tree with students from Webster Elementary. A representative from Idaho Department of Lands, Division of Community Forestry, will present us with our growth award after we read our proclamation. In addition to our tree planting ceremony, our urban forestry program has engaged in multiple other avenues of community engagement, including partnering with the school district to conduct educational programs and volunteer opportunities for youth in our community. We can look forward to greater levels of community involvement and increased visibility of urban forestry in the coming year, in addition to an already robust maintenance program in our public parks and green spaces. I would like to take this opportunity to express my appreciation of the city council for its continued support of urban forestry and our mission to enhance the quality of life in our city through the cultivation of trees. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Randall.
There will also be tree planting up at Modi Park that day.
And that's Saturday?
Yeah, that's Saturday at 1:00 p.m. in the ceremonial ring at Modi Park, just uphill from Annabelle's house.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a public hearing. Ms. Gomez, are we taking three separate actions, or how are we doing this?
No, the public hearing ends on the annexation of the plan amendment and the zone change.
So this is all considered under one heading?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So this is a public hearing in regards to annexation 16-000001, comprehensive plan amendment 16-000001, and zone change 16-000003. The applicant is Larry Key, or Larry Kay, on behalf of PK Metal Incorporated. He is considering a request to annex approximately seven acres of property located on the eastly side of Southport Avenue, across from 153 Southport Avenue. Assign a city of Lewiston comprehensive plan use, plan designation of industrial, and change the zoning from M2 Heavy Industrial in the ACI to M2 Heavy Industrial City. And who's introducing?
Ms. Gilbert.
Did you want to have the staff presentation first, or should we hear from the applicant after our meeting up in Moscow the other day?
I think hearing from the applicant would, if you wanted to do that.
Sir, do you have anything you want to say, or Mr. Mattoon on behalf?
Bill Weston, plant manager, PK Metals. I just want to let everybody, we enjoy the opportunity for PK to come up here and looking forward to doing business here in the Elsie Valley in Lewiston. We're looking forward to being annexed in, you know, to the, to the community, and we're ready to go.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Mattoon?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Doug Mattoon, Valley Vision, 110 Main Street. And again, I would like to urge your favorable consideration of the zoning and annexation requests in front of you. I know PK Metal is anxious to get started with the groundbreaking out there. My research has shown them to be a very solid, family-owned company that's been in existence for many years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Want to give a staff report?
So in your packet this evening, you have a request to review and make a decision upon annexation of seven acres located on the eastly side of Southport Avenue and across from 153 and 155 Southport Avenue. So we're talking about this area here on the map. And then opposite this area here, we have a couple of other manufacturers. We also have a comprehensive plan amendment to designate seven acres located on the eastly side of Southport Avenue, industrial, on the city of Lewiston Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map. And the reason for this is because we don't have a designation for that area just yet, because it's not in, within the city of limits. And then a zone change to amend the zoning on the seven acres on the eastly side of Southport Avenue from an M2 Heavy Industrial, which is in the area of city impact, to M2 Heavy Industrial for the city zoning. So the applicant approached the city in March 2016. We received an application to annex seven acres into the city from the area of city impacts. The steps involved in doing this require an annexation, the comprehensive plan amendment, and a zone change to address all of the prerequisites to obtaining the development permits. For the annexation, the applicant decided to have access to city services that would benefit their operations in Lewiston, and decided to go down the route of annexation so that they could get these, the access to the fire department services and the other city utilities. This was, seemed to be important to the applicant. In August 2015, the land was purchased southwest of the Lewiston-Nespresso County Regional Airport. This area is adjacent to other manufacturing establishments, so fits well into this area. The parcel of land is on the eastly side of the Southport Avenue. Annexation provides a benefit to the applicant and those who work within the operations in respect to city services and fire protection. For the comprehensive plan amendment for the parcel of land, the applicant purchased to expand their business to Lewiston, Idaho. It's, it's a land use designation of industrial. The city has recognized the potential for industrial development south of the airport and secured funding of 3.25 million for the southside water line and pump from the state and federal sources in exchange for job creation. This was met in 2008, enlarged by the growth of How Machine, and who is part of the ammunition cluster in the city and is adjacent to the land that we're talking about tonight. For the zone change, the area of city impact, which is the parcel, is located and sits in a M2 Heavy Industrial Zone in the county. And when we compare the M2 city zoning, there is very little difference, insofar as the county's M2 includes breweries, wineries, and with a conditional use permit billboards. So the actual zoning is very, very similar. Hearing notices were duly noticed by direct mail to property owners within 330 feet, site posting, and publication in the newspaper for both the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, which was held on March 28, and for this public hearing tonight. On March 28, 2016, the council approved resolution 2016-24 waiving certain development fees for the applicant. Subsequently, staff used this to match an opportunity fund request to help with the infrastructure costs that will benefit, benefit not only the applicant, but other industrial businesses that decide or may decide to locate in this area. The Idaho Department of Commerce awarded $85,000 towards infrastructure costs, so to, to help with the project. And staff will be monitoring the reimbursement of funds once the milestones and criteria have been met, according to the agreements. These agreements will come before the council on May 2 at the work session. For those councils who do not know of the applicant's business, they are in the recycling of metal and lead products that our local ammunitions and weapon manufacturers use. The majority of Lewiston's manufacturers work towards a Six Sigma or Lean manufacturing mythology whereby they have policies and processes that work towards reducing waste and recycling waste in their process. All permits that this business requires will go through as, with any business of this nature. So the DEQ permits will be obtained before the business opens. The project is to construct two new buildings, one 46,200 square foot and the other one 45,240 square foot. They will have off-street parking of about 100 stalls and a truck scale. They will open with 25 employees and expect to grow to 50 within five years. They have submitted the annexation request, and staff added the comprehensive plan amendment and the zone change to address all the prerequisites to obtaining development permits. So I just wanted to show you the zoning. So this is airport property just up here to the north, to the northeast, and then here, let me see if I can zone this other bit. That's better. So this area here is airport property. So that's northeast. And then this is the M2 zoning here. And the, and these are the manufacturing facilities here. To the sort of southeast, sorry, southwest, there is some residential in this area here. This area here is still within the area of city impact that you do not see colored. So the PK seven acres is approximately just around this area here. These maps are not to scale, by the way, so it's just giving you a visual of what it may look like. We have the civil drawings for the engineering, that's to do with the infrastructure, the, the fee waivers that were done through the resolution, and then also the, the grant that was awarded by Commerce. So this is to get the infrastructure to the two buildings and make sure that this whole area can, can use the infrastructure along the, the street here, Southport Avenue, and can loop round. So these are the two buildings that you see here, and community development are going through the review process of the civils and will then start on the building. So tonight, staff would move to approve the annexation 16-000001 for seven acre category A annexation, located on the eastly side of Southport Avenue and across from 153 and 155 Southport Avenue by ordinance number 4659. We also moved to approve CPA 16-000001 to designate the seven acres of property located on the southeastly side of Port Avenue, industrial, on the city of Lewiston Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map by resolution number 2016-25. Staff also moved to approve zone change ZNC 16-000003 to amend the zoning on seven acres located on the eastly side of Southport Avenue from an M2 Heavy Industrial ACI to M2 Heavy Industrial City by ordinance number 4660. And that's the staff report.
Okay. Any questions for Jackie? Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're going to go ahead and open up this public hearing. If there's anybody that wishes to speak in favor or opposed to the application for the zone change, comprehensive plan amendment, and the annexation? Okay, well, seeing none, I guess we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Not much point and rebuttal, Mr. Weston. I guess at this time, so we can read these all at the same, correct, or do we need to do each one?
Well, they are scheduled...
On the agenda in order. However, is that the question you're asking?
Well, I guess we're not taking an action on this. We're going to take action in the active agenda.
Yes, but if you want to deliberate on the council's thoughts of the application, you may do so.
Does anybody have any comments? Well, I've got a brief one, I guess. I'm looking forward to this. It's about time we had a little more activity, particularly on the manufacturing side. I think these people will be bringing in some decent jobs to the valley, which we can muse, and they have agreed to annex into the city, which will increase our tax base, something we can look at down the road. They're requesting city services, and I'm all for it, so. Anything else?
I don't know. Has council had an opportunity, I think in your package you were provided the reason statement from the Planning and Zoning Commission to review that, and they went through criteria? So I don't know if the council would like to comment on whether they generally agree with what the Planning and Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended or not?
Let me dig mine out here real quick.
Yeah, me too.
You mean this one that says it'll be distributed at the April 25 meeting?
Well, the decision tonight for council will be distributed later, but you should have been provided, I think, with a copy of the planning and zoning reason statement.
Previously.
Yes.
Yeah, I did not bring that with me, so.
Okay. The reason, it's a little different tonight because we are, the adoption of the council's reason statement is on the agenda for a little bit later. Usually that would be pushed to the next meeting, so you have time to review it beforehand. But it's based, the staff went ahead and drafted a reason statement for possible adoption tonight, and it's basically the same as the planning and zoning one. So just for council to discuss whether they agree with that or not, since you're, where it's on the agenda for action tonight.
Yes. Does everybody understand that? We'll have a few minutes to review, since we're possibly going to be doing a first and second reading this evening.
And Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just looking at the active agenda, and item C is the resolution 2016-25 assigning the comprehensive land use designation of industrial.
Mm-hmm.
I would recommend that that resolution be moved to the next meeting. Tonight, the council is scheduled to do a first and second reading of the annexation ordinance and the third reading at a meeting next week. I don't think the city can assign a land use until it's been annexed.
Okay.
So I would recommend moving that to the next meeting.
Which we could do on the...
Is it?
Second?
The second, I believe.
Everybody clear on that? Okay. Well, with that, we'll go ahead and move on to the, yes?
Would we need a motion to change the agenda?
Yes.
Which we'll do when we get there. Okay. So we'll go ahead, at this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to read the consent agenda unless anybody wants to move anything to active. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
Approving the city council meeting minutes of the April 4, 2016 work session, accepting the minutes of the January 7, February 4, March 3, and March 10, 2016 Historic Preservation Commission, February 17, 2016 Library Board of Trustees, and the March 16, 2016 Parks and Recreation Commission. Approving resolution 2016-17 by title only, a resolution conveying ownership of various fire equipment to the city of Craigmont. Approving resolution 2016-18 by title only, a resolution conveying ownership of various fire equipment to the Wheatland Fire Protection District. Approving the release of lean for 1706 7th Avenue, Deborah Moffett, since the amount has been paid in full to the city. And approving the vouchers payable dated March 25, 2016 through April 7, 2016, in the amount of $1,331,760.83.
Okay, counselors, the consent agenda's been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know that you need to amend the agenda. I think you could just table item C to make a second.
That's what I'd written down, table to the next meeting. Okay, active agenda, item A. So ordinance 4659 for potential first and second reading. This is implementing the city council's decision in annexation 16-000001 to annex land into the Lewiston city limits. I'll entertain a motion to read for the first time, ordinance 4659, by title only, suspending the rules.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
Approving the first reading of ordinance 4659 by title only, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston implementing the city council's decision in ANX 16-000001 to annex land into the city, Lewiston city limits and providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Ordinance 4659 has been read for the first time. I'll entertain a motion to read for the second time, ordinance 4659, by title only, suspending the rules. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That motion carries, seven to zero.
Approving the second reading of ordinance 4659 by title only, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston implementing the city council's decision in ANX 16-000001 to annex land into the city, Lewiston city limits and providing an effective date.
Okay. Ordinance 4659's been read for the second time. Next up?
This is the reason statement.
I guess we'll go ahead and I'll entertain a motion to approve the reason statement in zone change 16-000003 and comprehensive plan amendment 16-000001, approving the reason statement for zone change 03 and comprehensive plan amendment 01 from Larry Kay, PK Metal. We want to take a moment to go over, this is basically mirrors what the Planning and I guess at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the reason statement?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Counsel Collins?
Just one real quick question and maybe just a confirmation. Chief Michael Bost, on number four within the relevant criterion standard deals with undue burden upon delivery of services, both with the rezoning and even the prior zoning, we feel comfortable with fire department being able to get out there if something were to happen in that area? Okay, thank you.
I think some of the key points are size, type, intensity, and density development on this property as a result of this rezoning. It is suitable for this area. I mean, if anybody's driven out there and taken a look to what's going on, I think, in my opinion, it's a perfect place for that business to be located. It is in conformance with the comprehensive plan, and I think it's better suited for the zoning than the existing zoning, so I can support that. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? This is, this is a roll call, though. Okay. Okay, all in favor of approving the reason statement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, seven to zero. And next up, Resolution 2016-25, implementing the city council's decision in CPA 16-000001, assigning a comprehensive land use designation of industrial. And at this time, on the advice of council, I guess I'd entertain a motion to table...
Mayor, I would move that we table Resolution 2016-25 till our next scheduled meeting, May 2nd.
May 2nd?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries, seven to zero. And next, this is ordinance 4660, potential first and second readings. This is implementing the city council's decision in Zone Change 16-000003, declaring that certain real property be removed from the county heavy industrial M2 zone and included in the city heavy industrial M2 zone, amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston. I'll entertain a motion to read for the first time, ordinance 4660, by title only, suspending the rules.
So moved, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
Approving the first reading of ordinance 4660 by title only, an ordinance of the City of Lewiston implementing the city council's decision in ZNC 16-000003, declaring that certain real property be removed from the county heavy industrial M2 zone and included in the city heavy industrial M2 zone, amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston and providing an effective date.
Okay, counselors, ordinance 4660's been read for the first time. I'll entertain a motion to read for the second time, by title only, suspending the rules, ordinance 4660.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
Approving the second reading of ordinance 4660 by title only, an ordinance of the City of Lewiston implementing the city council's decision in ZNC 16-000003, declaring that certain real property be removed from the county heavy industrial M2 zone and included in the heavy, in the city heavy industrial M2 zone, amending the official zoning map of the city of Lewiston and providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Ordinance 4660's been read for the second time. Move on to Item E, Resolution 2016-30. And this is approving East Main Street Mill Road from the US Highway 12 intersection east to the city limit line for the travel of trucks weighing up to 129,000 pounds. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2016-30.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Just a quick question. I know the state is going to be talking to us on the second?
They are.
Okay. To clarify, maintenance of the interchange?
Among other things, they're going to be talking about the project they're going to be doing on US 12 there, which will involve that intersection of East Main and 21st on Memorial Bridge there.
Okay.
So we'll have a chance to ask them about the maintenance portion of that as well.
Or the modification, I guess, would be.
Right.
That was my concern. Wasn't the weight, it was the length.
Correct. It was the, the length of the trailers, being able to make the curves. But I think they have addressed that in the sense that they feel it can make that. It's the impact of the weight is not so much because of the dispersment of the weight over the axles.
Correct. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. Or do we need to read it? We didn't need to read it, no, thank you. Okay, next item up, Item F. And this is a possible bid rejection, Lewiston Library Second Floor Remodel Project. They're rejecting all bids and authorizing the project to rebid in May slash June with work to begin in the fall. I'll entertain a motion to reject the bids for the Lewiston Library Second Floor Remodel.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Had a brief chat with, with Mr. Comm from Castle of Comm Architects the other day and gave him a little bit of a bad time about sharpening up his pencil for us, but he's hoping that the climate may look a little bit better this fall, so they'll be ready to go up for a rebid. Anything else? Okay, all, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries, seven to zero. Okay, next up, Ordinance 4649 for possible third reading and adoption. This is an ordinance of the City of Lewiston and Nesperse County, amending the zoning ordinance of the Lewiston area of city impact, Lewiston City Code Section 39-55 and Section 9.2 of Nesperse County Ordinance Number 55, or 95, I'm sorry, vesting authority to approve amendments to the text of the zoning ordinance of the Lewiston area of city impact in the Board of Nesperse County Commissioners and Lewiston City Council. People are, remember from our last meeting, at this point in time, I believe, staff is working on still rewriting Chapter, or Section 39.
Repealing Chapter 39.
Repealing Chapter 39.
And possibly replacing it with something much shorter.
Okay. So I think on the recommendation of council, I would entertain a motion to not adopt. Would that be appropriate? To not read?
You could do, you could do a motion to read for the third time and then have, if nobody votes, then it will die.
Okay.
I think however you want to handle that.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I'll entertain the motion to read for the third time by title only, suspending the rules, ordinance 4649.
So moved.
And no second? Okay. The motion dies for lack of a second. On that note, I'll just say that we had a brief seminar on area city impacts up in Moscow last Friday, and they covered a little bit of that and what we can and can't do, so I look forward to seeing some new language perhaps put in front of us that will work for the county and us. Okay, next up, Item H, Ordinance 4661 for possible second reading. This is amending Chapter 2, Article 8, or 13, I'm sorry, of Lewiston City Code to remove the Solid Waste Advisory Commission and the Transportation Advisory Commission to allow for ad hoc committees amend the appointment and removal requirements of advisory board and commission members and revise reference to the Idaho Open Meeting Law. I'll entertain a motion to read for the second time by title only, suspending the rules, ordinance 4661.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
Approving the second reading of ordinance 4661 by title only, an ordinance of the City of Lewiston amending Chapter 2, Article 13 of the Lewiston City Code to remove the Solid Waste Advisory Commission and the Transportation Advisory Commission, allow for ad hoc committees, amend the appointment and removal requirements of advisory board and commission members, and revise reference to the Idaho Open Meeting Law and providing an effective date.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. Ordinance 4661's been read for the second time. Moving on to Item I, Resolution 2016-31. This is a, approving a sole source resolution declaring General Fire Apparatus Inc. as the only vendor of Viking structural protective firefighter gear. I'll entertain a motion to approve by roll call vote, Resolution 2016-31.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Counselor Maldonado?
Aye.
Counselor Blakey?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Collins?
Aye.
Counselor Randall?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, seven to zero. The resolution carries, seven to zero. Thank you. And next up, Ordinance 4663 for the first reading. This is adopting the termination budget of the City of Lewiston Urban Renewal Agency, terminating revenue allocation area one as set forth in the Urban Renewal Plan 2 for the City of Lewiston Urban Renewal Agency. I'll entertain a motion...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Laura is not able to be here tonight, and she did want to request three readings of this ordinance tonight, so I let, I told her I would let council know that she was making that request.
I did see the email. It's her particular reason.
I think that she wanted to get it done in time for the taxing districts to be able to take into account the revenue that will be flowing back to them in time for their budgets. I emailed her and she didn't respond for a good reason today, because she's out. But I don't know if you take it up at your next meeting. It's still in May. I would think there's still enough time, if it got passed in May in two meetings, that it would be done in time for the taxing districts to take that into account. Do you know, to the contrary?
I don't know the specific reason for the request. But...
I'll defer to Counsel Blakey.
It was brought up in our URA meeting. It was a timing issue.
But what is the timing issue?
To make sure we meet that July cutoff date. And Dan, you can help me with that date. Is it 28th or some date like that in July? Put you on the spot there.
Decided to come forth. It's a little easier here at home if I come to the mic. Yes, the Tax Commission needs to know, like, the Fourth Monday of July officially. They really, though unofficially tell us it's June. They really need to know June so they can crunch some numbers. State Tax Commission is already aware of the closing, Nesperse County as well. So I would recommend, as City Attorney Gomez mentioned, that I think two readings is sufficient. And that's, that's what I would...
Well, we'd have to make an amendment to the agenda.
You would have to amend the agenda and state a good faith reason why it was not scheduled for two readings, if that's what you're going to do.
Or you could have a second and third reading.
You could have second and third readings next time, yes.
In properly notice at that time.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe that's a little cleaner.
That would probably be the cleaner way to do it.
That's what I assumed you were going to do. Okay.
Got you.
Okay, are we clear on that?
Yes.
Laura's request was to do all three readings tonight?
Yes.
Yes.
And we're uncomfortable with that?
I am.
I would be uncomfortable with it and for the fact that it's only agendated for one reading.
Okay. Yeah, and I agree. I think we can, if we're in agreement, we can do the first reading and then the, I guess it would be the meeting of the ninth?
Yeah.
You could do second, third, and adoption.
Second and third, okay. Are we clear on that?
Yep.
Okay, so where are we at? Did I get a motion in the second yet?
No, you were just going to call for a motion for the first reading.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to read for the first time, ordinance 4663 by title only, suspending the rules.
So moved, second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero.
Approving the first reading of ordinance 4663 by title only, an ordinance of the City of Lewiston adopting the termination budget of the City of Lewiston Urban Renewal Agency, terminating revenue allocation area one as set forth in the Urban Renewal Plan 2 for the City of Lewiston Urban Renewal Agency. Providing the allocation of revenues attributable to revenue allocation area one shall cease effective January 1, 2016, providing for the payment of delinquent property taxes following termination, requiring distribution of any surplus revenue allocation funds determined to exist as of September 30, 2016 pursuant to Idaho Code Section 50-2909 Subsection 4, directing the City of Lewiston Urban Renewal Agency to cause this ordinance a boundary map and the legal description of revenue allocation area one to be filed in the offices of the Nesperse County Recorder, the Nesperse County Assessor, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as provided in Idaho Code Sections 50-2903 Subsection 5 and 63-215, directing the City of Lewiston Urban Renewal Agency to provide a copy of this ordinance to each of the taxing entities affected by termination of revenue allocation area one and providing an effective date.
And that was the title?
Yep.
I thought you were reading the whole thing. Thank you, Carrie. Okay, ordinance 4663's been read for the first time. Yeah, I look forward to seeing the rest of it on the ninth. Okay, next up, Item K. This is Transit Dispatch Services Agreement.
Need a vote.
Sorry?
Need a vote.
Oh. No, it's the first reading.
Oh, it's just the first reading, huh?
Forget it, okay.
Sorry about that.
Trying to get better at this. Okay, Item K, Transit Dispatch Services Agreement. This is approving a revised joint Transit Dispatch Services Agreement between the City of Lewiston and Assotin County Public Transportation Benefit Area, the PTBA. Ms. Gro, do you have something for us?
Not really. This is just a revision of a contract. I didn't think you were going to call me up because you were going through them so fast.
Well, you're here.
So this is essentially the same contract that we have had in the past. We've been doing joint dispatch. We've had an agreement with the Assotin County PTBA since 2009, when the city took transit in-house, and so did the PTBA. And so this is a way for both agencies to save money by doing joint dispatch, and this is just a revision to that contract.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Shannon. Okay, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the Transit Dispatch Services Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. We have any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oh, a roll call, I'm sorry. It is a contract. Thank you.
Counselor Maldonado? Counselor Blakey?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Collins?
Aye.
Counselor Randall?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries, seven to zero. Well, that concludes our active agenda. We'll move on to new business, city council comments. Do we have any council comments this evening? Yes, Counsel Blakey?
As we all know here at the council, and as the city members of the city know, but the folks out there watching, four of us had a chance to go up last Friday and go to the Spring Association of Idaho Cities Meetings. And again, I just want to say how I feel, how important that group is to the City of Lewiston. They, we pay into them, they represent us in Boise, and essentially, they are the lobby group, or a lobby group that represents the cities in Lewiston's interest when it comes down to state government. And they do a wonderful job and a wonderful presentation, and I never come away from one of their meetings without a nugget of new information and a better way to serve the city. And I have to, I applaud them on all the hard work they do.
Any others? I would second that. Now, Counsel Maldonado, that is probably your first, first time.
I had a lot of new nuggets of information.
Yes. Sometimes it is a lot to absorb, so. Anything else? I got a, I've got a comment or maybe a statement, but I saw on the agendas for different meetings that are going on, the school districts having a little chat about the potential uses of the old property with, and relaying information from discussions with the college and the city. Have we had discussions with the...
No.
High school? Okay, I just, that kind of stuck on, I thought we'd, we've had chat.
That's on our agenda for next week.
Yes. But they're having their... But they're having their meeting tonight.
I imagine just to tell them that they're going to meet with us.
Oh, okay. That's good. So we have not had any formal discussions. That's okay. The other thing is, I just wanted to pass on to the council that I did receive a letter from Lieutenant Governor Brad Little thanking us for, for our forward thinking and being able to help a new manufacturing outfit coming into this area. He'd, he'd been actively involved in recruiting up here as well. And had a little, I guess, personal interest in it, if you will, but he did thank us and again, we, just so people know, I know there was a little story in the paper, but after talking with Lieutenant Governor a couple of times, you know, it didn't take very long. I was able to get some applications. Jackie did a great job filling the application out for the Idaho Opportunity Fund Grant. And that's how we were able to get our eighty-five thousand dollars. Using our eighty-five thousand dollar waiver of the fees as the match. So we in a, in essence got another eighty-five from the from the State Department of Commerce, and I think that's going to go a long ways to help with the infrastructure up there. Particularly for future expansion as a need arises, so. With that, Mr. Bennett, do you have anything for us this evening?
Just a note, we have a little change next week with our May second meetings. We have a special meeting of the Police Retirement Board at two thirty to briefly meet followed by our regular work session at three o'clock. There will be some active agenda items on the three o'clock meeting as well. So that's a little different than normal. All those will be held as usual at the City Hall Conference Room.
Okay. Advisory Board and Commission appointments, do we have any this evening? I, today I believe we've only received one application for planning and zoning. I've talked to two other potentially interested people and I told them, and this was last week, so I probably will make a couple more phone calls. If anybody knows, anybody they think would be interested or enjoy being on the Planning and Zoning Commission, it's a I mean, is one of our more important commissions. Especially when it comes to local land use planning. To advise the council on, on issues concerning zoning, comprehensive plans, conditional uses, things like that. So if anybody knows anybody, please get hold of Carrie, because I would really like to have this wrapped up maybe within the next week or two. If we get a couple of applications, then we have a subcommittee that will schedule interviews and then we'll make a choice from there, so. Next up, work session, agenda topics. I guess we have a pretty full one next, next Monday, so if anybody's got anything they want to add. Counselor Randall?
There was some discussion because of the because of the metal business that was wanting in that we might look at for a model ordinance to help business come into a community.
Yes, so that we actually have it on our books. And I've discussed it with our city attorney and
I believe Jackie is working on a draft and she'll forward it to our office when the draft is ready.
Okay. But I think that'd be important for us going forward instead of doing it by resolution, which we're allowed to do. It's just I think having it on the books, you know, city code would be more appropriate. And yeah, if we're on down the road, if we need to do something, it'll allow us that opportunity because we'll list the reasons for what qualifies and that's a very good point, Counselor. Anything else? Okay, well, at this time, I'd entertain a motion by roll call vote to go into executive session. RE records exempt from disclosure under Idaho Code section seventy-four dash two oh six, print one, print D.
Second.
You have a motion and a second.
Counselor Maldonado?
Aye.
Counselor Blakey?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Miller?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Collins?
Aye.
Counselor Randall?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you everybody for coming. We'll go ahead and take a four-minute break.